Please call the board.
Brooks.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Bowman. Winters.
Here.
All right. Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October 18th, 2021. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $329,469.21. And payroll expenses of $185,582.46. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Sherman. Sorry. Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. The first item is Personnel Committee meeting held on October 19th, 2021, and also due item G, Personnel Committee meeting held on November 9th, 2021. Mr. Winters.
I'll start with the October 19th meeting. We ended our EMS salary review, having reviewed pay scale, yes, no. Oh, I thought you were...
No, sorry.
Having reviewed the pay scale information and surrounding regional information, determined that our pay is relatively in line with the surrounding region, and have begun work towards the Police Department as the next department for review. Continued some work on our council handbook, and going through that, which is, kind of leads into the next item. As part of the O-MAG, there's a recognition program that we get a rebate for. Part of that is approving the handbook, doing a stability test, and attendance and training. That training is going to be being scheduled by Angelica and staff in the coming weeks. We determined that it would probably be best if everyone attended that together as opposed to trying to complete it on our own. At the November 9th meeting, we ended up primarily reviewing a possibility of a grant writing position, and what that job description looks like, and the costs associated with it, and the different details surrounding that position. If there's any questions, I'll be answering them.
Council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Special Alvisus Seminoles Cemetery Meeting on October 21st, 2021. Angelica.
So this meeting was basically a reschedule of our regularly scheduled meeting. We weren't able to have a quorum for that meeting, and we talked primarily about the state of the cemetery at the time, and staffing needs at the cemetery, and what that looked like. Just, there was a lot of public input, comments, with suggestions and some different items related to upkeep at the cemetery.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on October 26th, 2021. Mr. Bowman is not with us this evening. I was not in attendance at that meeting either, so we'll skip item C.
I will say I have not received the meeting packet or the minutes, and when I get those, I can email them out to the group.
Item D is Ordnance Review Committee meeting held on November 2nd, 2021. Mr. Stelling.
Everything was basically kind of going over things. Received a kind of a draft of the business ordinance, and found it the lack of time to really sit there and go through it, let everybody take it home. We're just going to do some more discussing on the beekeeping ordinance, and I believe Daniel is going to do some more digging on that for us. And discussion on nuisance ordinance, just another thing we've still got to kick around, everybody take a look at, see if there's anything struck that need to be changed or different since, I mean, somewhat, not real lengthy, but enough that we could decide everything at the time, everything. So it's pretty much just going over things. Was there...
Does the council have any questions for Andy? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting on November 8th, 2021. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about our capital improvement plan, our five-year CIP for the airport. Really, that's primarily focused on finishing up the apron project that's underway, but also what we're going to be doing with future funds, as it's anticipated that there's going to be an increase, a significant increase in funds, and it's actually, I can't remember what project we're bumping back, but...
Phase two of the apron expansion.
Oh, phase two, okay. So we'll get phase one of the apron finished, but it looks like these funds are going to be a significant amount of money, and, but have a different priority. So, I can't remember.
It's a taxi, um, taxiway.
Yeah. So the old original air runway will be rehabbed into a better taxiway. So that would be the purpose of the change to the five-year plan. And then phase two of the apron expansion would be after that. Thirty thousand plus dollars in fuel sales for the month of October, best month since I've been on the airport board. And so the traffic has been really good, despite having some issues with our lights this month. At the time of the meeting, we were still trying to get someone to come in and make some repairs as quickly as possible. The board did authorize the city business manager and the airport manager to make the, do whatever needed to be done within their spending limits, and then if necessary, if those costs were going to be over the spending limits, we'd have a special airport board meeting to approve the project. But there's, as of last Monday, they still didn't know yet what it was going to take to fix.
We still don't know how we could, so they've come out, they came out and they've gone through a good portion of the lights. They were able to find some pieces that they were able to fix, but they were going to come back out another day this week and spend another day out here going through and trying to determine where the issue is at, so.
Essentially, they feel like something has shorted, some wires somewhere got shorted out with each other, but they haven't been able to locate the main problem. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
I was just going to ask, you mentioned during that meeting the possibility that electrical damage might be covered under insurance, and you were going to look that up, but that was a possibility?
Yeah, I haven't heard back on that. I had sent an email to our claims handler, and she hasn't followed up, so I will follow up with her. Thank you.
Any other questions? Next item is the Alba Public Library Board Meeting on November 8th, 2021. Mr. Dowling.
Yeah, it was a good library board meeting. The book items were 1,708 items were checked out for that month, 800 of them being eBooks. 223 items were added to the collection, or physical items were added to the collection, and 146 items were deselected from the collection. There also were, three meetings were held during the month, with looking forward to several more reservations coming up in the next month. They also are introducing a new coding library, a new coding labeling system to the library for the youth library. It's basically based off color, so that you can more identify, more easily identify the type of book that you're looking at. And then the youth librarian, Amy Ryerson, also visited Lincoln Elementary School to conduct some programs and classes, and to conduct a brief survey to just see what the general consensus is among the children about the library, and try to raise more support for that. They're also looking at adding another part-time position under a seasonal position specifically for the spring semester, and the library is assessing the remaining policies that we have yet to approve, those policies on our selections of materials, meeting room use, and food and drink guidelines.
And I would expand on that position as, not adding a position, but we had one staff member that had just left, and we'd never replaced that position, and so we're looking at replacing it as a part-time position as it sits right now.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for the library board meeting?
I was going to ask, I think we voted to move the time of our next meeting to noon on December 13th, just as a general consensus.
That's just the one meeting?
Just that one meeting. I think the idea was, apparently, they usually sponsor yearly lunch, that they wanted to do that during that.
Oh, yeah.
In regards to that position, it was, it was a full-time position before?
Yes, and I think the need necessarily for a full-time youth librarian at that was not necessarily seen as needed at that moment, so they're hoping to support that.
Was that full-time position part of the budget until then? Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Taylor. Next item is the Finance Committee meeting held on November 15th, 2021. Mr. Martin.
Pretty general discussion for the most part. Talked about the trash truck, parts and the trouble we're having there, and discussion on possibly, you know, a new versus the expense of maintenance that we've had. Talked about the item tonight a little bit, the checking account for the ARPA funding, and then just general discussion again on the ARPA funding as a whole. As far as numbers go, total cash investments, totaling 4.0, almost 4.3 million. Has collect, let's see, 33%. Major funds as a whole, 33% of the budget revenue has been collected, expended 27%. So moving right along there. Sales tax is up 3.35% from September 2021, and up 8.2% from October 2020. Sales and use taxes at 34% of this year's budget, so pretty good, pretty good numbers, pretty good information.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you, Connor. Next item is Mayor's Report. Angelica and I earlier, I guess it was in October, attended the Teeny Tiny Town Conference, and despite the name, it was, it was big on information. It was, had some relevance to towns our size and smaller primarily. It's something that I, you know, I don't think we knew exactly what we were going to experience when we went, but it's something that if you, any of you have time to attend next year, it would be worth your time to do so, and we'll be sure and share that information with everybody. Also, attended some meetings regarding ARPA, and have another meeting coming up on Wednesday at the State Capitol to meet with the committee that's responsible for deciding, you know, how the state's going to use the $1.9 billion that it has. And so we're hoping to learn from that, what they're looking for in project elements, as well as what they're looking for in matching support from the applicants. So that will be pretty much, you know, morning, you know, mid-morning to mid-afternoon. And Senator Murdoch is going to, you know, host us, and has been the one that has asked for this meeting to occur. We'll have people representing a lot of rural water districts, as well as municipal utilities in attendance from Alfalfa, Major Woods, and Harper Counties. And there will also be a portion of the conversation that is geared towards broadband. So we're primarily have, you know, two objectives. One is to make sure that, you know, I'm not worried about Senator Murdoch or Representative Nugent forgetting about us out here, but make sure that the other members of that committee understand that we have needs out here in Northwest Oklahoma. Alba alone has close to $40 million of water infrastructure, you know, that if we had the money to do it, we could put it to use today. So we'll be telling them that, you know, we do have needs and don't forget about us, but we're also really on a fact-finding mission to figure out what we need to do to put a successful grant application together. So that'll be Wednesday. January 14th, the Municipal League is going to be hosting a municipal budget training. I've asked Angelica to go ahead and make, you know, the Finance Committee and those that are able to attend, get their registrations in, but open that up to any of the rest of the council that would like to participate in that as well. There will be an in-person as well as virtual option if you're not able to make it to the meeting. I can't remember where it is, I'm sure it's up on the city. The Municipal League had their board retreat the first Wednesday of the month, really to, this is the time of year they're finished with their annual conference, and it's kind of a slow time, so they're, the board has decided that annually we'll have a retreat to kind of relook at priorities for the league. Among the things discussed were ongoing elected official training. The requirement is that every newly-elected official receive training on, you know, things like Open Meetings Act, and competitive bidding, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But the longer people serve, if they don't have that ongoing training, the less knowledgeable they are when things change and keep up on stuff. So they've talked about having ongoing officials' training. And then another item that I think is going to, you know, maybe help us out a little bit is that they're going to start making efforts to help us articulate some of the, you know, legislative issues that we are experiencing in our communities when we have our community coffees and eggs and issues and those kind of events in our communities. And so just a little, little bit more information is sent out to us, so that we're not necessarily receiving the 15 pages of OML legislative priorities, but we are receiving information on those items that our, you know, elected officials, our senator and representative are responsible for, or at least are in leadership positions and those types of things, so that we can improve that process of how we influence state legislation. And then the last thing I'll report on, it was real nice on Veterans Day, the Moose Lodge had a dinner with 70, about 70 veterans and guests in attendance, and had the opportunity to get a picture with former Mayor's Chafee and Stan Klein, we're missing, you know, Johnny Barton from here in Alba, but we did have the former Beaver Mayor, Kirk Fisher, in attendance, so it was neat to kind of have those guys, not only having had leadership positions with our community, but having served our country as whatever branch of service they were in. So Moose did a great job putting on that dinner. Happy to try to answer any questions. Thank you. Next item is Business Manager's Report.
I wanted to report, we have hired several full-time employees. We are still looking for some part-time help, rec center, and then as Taylor mentioned at the library. The rec center is, give my shameless plug for we need refs, and we need scorekeepers, and gate help on Saturdays. We are playing basketball every Saturday from now and into January, and so it just takes a lot of manpower to make that happen, so we are needing help there. Sanitation truck, I know Connor mentioned the fact that we discussed that in Finance Committee, so we are, we ordered up the part that we believe is needed for that truck that's meant Southwest Truck Parts about six weeks ago. We are just waiting for it to come in. Supply chain issues have really hurt us there. We are hoping that that will fix the issue, and we can continue moving forward with our other projects that we wanted to do for the sanitation department instead of buying a new trash truck. But if, in fact, that does not work, then the plan is to look at what a new trash truck could do for us. An update on some of the projects. So the water well that we are rehabbing in the well field, it's progressing quite well. We did hit a snag. We are going to be expecting a change order in next month's meeting. The power supply that was engineered for the project is, needs to be changed, I think something that just didn't quite, just an error, I guess. And so we are going to have to purchase a transformer for that well field and that area of the well field. So it, we'll be expecting that change order for the next meeting. The high school water line project to put the fire hydrants in at the high school, we are, they are still waiting on parts, that's why that project has yet to start. I talked to Bill, they were hoping to get those in soon, but that project is supposed to be ending soon, and so we will have to do a change order for that one as well. As soon as we can get that started, we will. The rehab at the rec center, it's in its final stages. There's still some work that needs to be done, and we're working with the engineer to make sure that everything gets done to our satisfaction. We'll, hopefully, that project will be completed soon, but they are able to have, you know, basketball games and things, just like normal, or just have some areas where the work is still happening. We did receive our, the first half of our ARPA funds in October, about $432,000, and we have on the agenda later to open up a checking account for those funds. As Mayor Parker discussed, we're trying to find out what the rules and regulations are for spending that, and the most appropriate place for us to be able to spend those as well. I will also say that I know that I had said that our audit would be on the agenda tonight, and we're really close to having it there. There's just a few missing pieces of the report that the auditor's trying to put together. He believes that we'll likely have it well before the December meeting, if that would happen. I may discuss with you guys having a special meeting to go ahead and have him present that, and then you guys can accept that if it gets done, so we don't have to wait to the December meeting. I'd like to get that taken off, taken off of everybody's to-do list. And then our accounting associates will be here later this week to help us prepare for this year's audit, so we should be in a much better position going forward for this year on the audit. We are looking at having our Christmas party on December 3rd, so keep that on your calendar. As we finalize that date and everything finalized, I will let you guys know. And then finally, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the pool committee is doing a pool input meeting on Thursday, November 18th. It's at 7:00 PM at Northwest Tech. I encourage you guys to attend. Part of applying for grants and going out for federal grants is we have an input session for the citizens of Alba to have their, to supply their input and tell us what they feel like the priority should be for the pool. So come, Mayor Parker, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I mean, that's, it's checking off one of the boxes on the grant application requirements. There've been several listening sessions and public events to discuss the pool. This one is one that has had formal publication, and so it'll be the one that counts for the grant application. But, and this is a land and water conservation fund grant that would be a 50/50 matching grant if we get it. The grant itself, we're estimating about a $750,000 ask with that, so. But anyway, the meeting on Thursday is just to go over and have another formal round of public input.
What time is that meeting?
Seven, isn't it? Seven PM.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
Thursday, November 18th.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Brady?
We thought of re-talking about that, we're waiting on the petition.
1920.
Nope, the 1920 audit. We are still waiting on the petition audit, but I have not heard back from the state auditors and inspectors office yet on that. I know, I think as I stated previously, they had several other audits that were slated to be done before ours, and so I think it's in the final stages of review, but I haven't, I haven't heard anything from them in about two months now, so.
You got any bills from them?
I think we paid our final bill. We did have a bill, but it was a small, very small comparison to some of the other ones. But every, anytime they would do any work, you know, we would get a bill for that, and so.
Any other questions for Angelica? Thank you. Next item is Remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment would be limited to two minutes per speaker, and the speaker can identify themselves when they approach the podium. Anybody like to share any comments with us this evening? Thank you for coming. Item eight is Discussion and Action to Open a Checking Account for the ARPA Funds. The City of Alba, as we have discussed, I won't just read this to you, but for the $437,000 that we did receive, rather than commingle them in the general fund, it was, it's been advised for auditing purposes that we establish a separate account for these funds, and in that way, when we use them, we'll have a better tracking mechanism for, you know, how they came in and where they went. Do you have anything else, Angelica, on the account?
No.
I'd entertain discussion or a motion.
What was the amount of the funds that we received?
It was...
432...
432,000. Give me a minute. After motion, maybe I can have a clue, so I can give you the exact dollar amount.
And that would be approximately half of what we're slated to receive.
Ballpark wins the other half.
Is it two, six months or a year? I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it's a year.
Just out of curiosity, this, this is the part that we can use to, as a matching part for a grant that we applied for?
Okay. We, yeah, we can either use these funds for infrastructure projects such as broadband, water, sewer, not at this time. There's some state legislation that's being discussed, but it's not been approved, but there's some discussion on whether or not it could be available for roads and bridges. But we can also use this for matching funds and grant applications.
It was $432,533.90.
Interest-bearing account?
Yes.
Very good.
I'd make a motion to open a checking account for the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to open a checking account for the ARPA funds. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Next item is Discussion and Action on the Mayor's Appointment of Gail Swallow to the Alba Recreation Board. Brandon Sherman was our city council representative on that board, and he is no longer on the city council. And so I would like to have Gail take that spot, and so that's my recommendation. I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to appoint Gail Swallow to Alba Recreation Board.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Brooks, to appoint Gail Swallow to the Alba Recreation... to the Alva Recreation Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Next item is the discussion in action on the mayor's appointment of Brandon Sherman to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024. Uh, this seat was, uh, previously held by, uh, J.C. Heaton. Uh, J.C. has had some trouble attending meetings and, and, and so, um, Brandon is, uh, willing to continue serving in, on that board, um, if the council would see it appropriate.
I'd make a motion to appoint Brandon Sherman to the Alva Recreation Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Winters, to appoint Brandon Sherman to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Next item is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Shane Hansen to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024. Uh, Shane's been on the board, um, for, I think this would be his second full term. He fulfilled an unexpired term to begin with, but this would be his second, uh, full term. Um, he is willing to continue serving, and I therefore recommend reappointment.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Shane Hansen to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to reappoint Shane Hansen to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024. Is there any further discussion?
I don't really know anything about him, but...
Shane is, um, I'm not sure what he does at the university. He works for the university, um, he and his, uh, family came here, or he, he came here for college and, and state. Um, they're raising a family here, he's got young kids, and they'll be probably close, none of the car yard he utilizes in the right market, so...
He's a full-time faculty member, teaches HSSE.
Okay.
Up in sports science.
Played basketball at Northwestern. I think he's the most, uh, as far as rec board activity wise goes, I'd say he's the most qualified person on there, in my opinion. I mean, I'd, I'd give him a shot, I got, I, uh, think a lot of things, so...
I believe he's also on the school board.
Yeah.
Or was, I think he's still a school...
He's a school coordinator, too.
He's a...
He's very active.
Good member for that board.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
And item 12 is discussion in action on the mayor's reappointment of Chad Fisher to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024. Um, Chad has also, Chad served on that board when he was on the City Council, and, and this would be his second term, um, not being a member of the City Council. Um, he, uh, Chad's background is, is probably biggest contribution to that board is gonna be his knowledge of construction, and, um, therefore he is my recommendation for reappointment.
I'd make a motion to prove mayor's reappointment of Chad Fisher to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending October 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mrs. Beer, to reappoint Chad Fisher to the Alva Recreation Board for a term ending in October 2024. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Item 13 is new business. I don't believe we have anything that meets that criteria. Um, item 14, remarks and inquiries by council members. Item 15 is adjourned. Now we will call it order the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Shelley, when you're ready, please call a roll.
Bowman? Winters?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Dally?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 18th, 2021. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of 119,860 dollars and 24 cents, and payroll expenses of 42,534 dollars and 57 cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
Okay, we'll adjourn the utility authority meeting and open, call it order the, uh, regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting.
Winters?
Here.
Dally?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Bowman? Stelling?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October 18th, 2021, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of 15,682 dollars and 85 cents, and payroll expenses of 12,189 dollars and 24 cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dally?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.